All right, I'd like to call the Summersworth School Board Meeting of September 26, 2023 to order. Can I please have a roll call, Superintendent?
Yes, Mr. Murras?
Oh, here, I'm never first.
Ms. Marsh?
Here.
Ms. Tierney?
Here.
Ms. Wentworth?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Hackworth?
Here.
Ms. McCowen?
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. Would like to open the floor for comments by visitors. If there's any comments by visitors today, please approach the podium, say your name and address, we'd be happy to hear you. I don't think anyone's outside. Okay. Seeing no comments, we'll go to Agenda Item Number Two, the Consent Calendar. What's the wish of the Board for the adoption of the Consent Calendar?
I move to adopt or accept the Consent Calendar as presented.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion related to any of the items on the Consent Calendar? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Consent Calendar is adopted. Agenda Item Number Three, our Reports. There's no report for our student representatives hopefully our next board meeting. And we'll turn it over to Agenda Item 3.2, our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I have a few items I need to report on tonight. First one is just wanted to give you an update. Last time when Ms. Blair was here, she talked about English speakers of other languages and talked about having 97 students. And I think there was some interest from board members on the variety of languages. And in your board packet, we put in all the different languages that are served. We have 24 different languages in Summersworth, which is quite a bit. And so just wanted to let you see that information. And our students represent 10 countries of birth. So it's quite diverse language and high number of students. And just want to let you know that. And the 97 students are served by three teachers and they're all paid under the Title III Grant. Just wanted to have, just follow up with that for you. And if you have any questions. Okay. Transportation. Things have quieted down. I haven't received any emails since the, for a couple of weeks now. I don't know if you folks have received anything, but principals have told me things have calmed down and bus company has been, it's been quiet. So just wanted to, I told you I'd report back on it. It seems like things have settled down. And we had a couple of meetings and got through, you know, the beginning of the school year and feeling, feeling better than I was a couple of weeks ago. So that's that. And then I wanted you to see a memorandum of understanding that was put together for the school-based health clinic. That document will be signed by myself and the CEO for the Goodwin Health Center. And so I just wanted to just let you see the document. It's embedded by our attorneys. Their attorneys looked at it and we're ready to go for signature. I don't know if you had any questions, but just felt that you should see that before I sign off on it. That's available for your review. And Katie's report, I can represent Katie tonight. I don't know if you have any questions with regard to her report. Pretty self-explanatory. I don't know if you have any questions you want me to answer. I can read through it if you want me to, but I'm feeling like you probably can figure it out. That's okay.
Yeah. And email Katie with any specifics with, with that. But if there's anything urgent right now to, right, seeing none.
Right. So that's it for me. Pretty, pretty quick tonight.
Okay. We'll move to our committee reports. Let's start with standing committees, Budget and Revenue.
City Council.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. Agenda Item 3.4, our City Council update, Counselor Austin.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I will report that the Finance Committee met on September 20th to take a first look at the supplemental appropriation. That will come to a first reading at the City Council meeting next week, next Monday. By RSA, it requires a, a public hearing. So the public hearing will occur prior or at the meeting where the second reading happens, which will be on October 26th, our second meeting of October. And it requires a six vote approval by the City Council in order to pass the supplemental appropriation. So it's two-thirds of the, of the nine members. So that, it's, it's not something that can happen really quickly, but we understand, of course, the time pressures associated with this and this is as fast as we can make it happen. So the second reading will occur on October 26th. Public hearing will happen and then the City Council will take its vote that evening. Thank you.
Board Member Tierney, followed by Marsh.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Austin, I was curious, I, I believe I read somewhere that there was a bit of a, there was some discussion in regards to how, to spending that money, that maybe there were, there was some discussion about using it instead to lower the tax rate? Did I, did I read that correctly?
The City Council always tries to balance when we get, when we get an opportunity to receive additional revenues, we try to balance that with necessary items that we need to spend the money on versus impacting the, the taxpayer by reducing their tax rate. So as timing would have it, of course, in October, all the reports have to go to the Department of Revenue Administration and they determine the tax rate based on the revenues and expenses of the city. So money that isn't specifically allocated to an expense actually goes to reduce the tax rate. So that's usually the discussion at the City Council level. We recognize and we continue to hold to the fact that we can't dictate to the school board how you spend your money. We just allocate a lump sum to you, just like we do in the regular budget process. So that's the same way this supplemental appropriation will work. We can't tell you if we approve X number of dollars, we can't tell you how to spend that. You can, you know, we certainly appreciate your recommendation on how you think you would spend it. But at the end of the day, you know, we can only approve the money. It's up to you to determine how you spend it there.
Okay, so even if theoretically, all the city councilors were like, oh, well, this, I don't, we don't like what they're going to do with it because we think it should all go to lower the, you know, the taxes. That, that, that really shouldn't, that's not up to, that, that's not going to weigh in on your decision to approve it or not?
Well, I, I wouldn't go quite that far. Because I think that each council will make a decision on whether they want to approve the supplemental appropriation or amend the amount or not approve it at all.
Okay.
And so that, that could happen theoretically. If there's not six votes, it's not a majority vote. It has to be six votes to approve.
Okay.
So if there's not those six votes, there won't be the supplemental appropriation at all.
Okay. So, and if you say no, I'm sorry, just, so if the money is not, so, okay, so if we don't have those six votes, right, then what happens to that money?
Then that money goes into the general fund.
Okay, so the city basically keeps that money? Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, Board Member Marsh, followed by Ms. Murras? No? All right, Board Member Murras.
I just want to ask a clarifying question. The money we're asking to be appropriated was funds provided to us via the adequacy avenue with the, is either the state or a combination of state and federal, for education and students, right? So we're asking you by technicality to give back education intended money that you might vote to put in the general fund? Am I just, I'm just making sure that I'm saying that right?
Sure, Counselor Austin.
Is there other times that adequacy money has landed in the general fund? Is this a common, like, debate? It was my understanding that when money comes down the pike, because our students are determined to need this to make their education adequate, that the money should probably go to the education system, especially when it's above and beyond what the state had told us they were going to give us for the year. So that's why we didn't have it in the budget. This isn't us asking you for extra money that we were negligent in budgeting. And if, I'm just clarifying because that's what the people at home are going to be wondering. Like, wait, this doesn't make sense. Why are we asking for more money? Well, this money was provided to the district, the school district, and because of how our city functions, it's a technicality that at this time of the year, when unplanned money comes in, even if it's literally earmarked for students, that the city could keep it? That's puzzling to me and I think there might be a lot of discussion at the October 26th meeting.
Counselor Austin, I'm sure that you're aware from your many years on the school board what adequacy aid and the grants are. Do you, are you, do you think that the City Council is aware of the purpose of the money and how it's, how it was, you know, how it came to be and the purpose of allocating that money from the legislative updates for an adequate education?
Well, I'm certainly confident that the Finance Committee understands that. The City Council will have an opportunity to debate the whole question on that second reading. And I think that's an opportunity for, for you or whoever you designate to come and talk about, you know, how that money came to be and, and what its, its intended purpose is. To Mandy's point, I would say it's more than a technicality. It's actually the way the process works in a city. Every city in the state except Concord. That money is, is unanticipated revenue, you know, and I, I get, I get why it was, was coming to the district. I certainly understand the concept of adequacy aid. But, you know, it is additional revenue that doesn't flow directly to the school district. It flows to the city of Summersworth. So, you know, to your point, you certainly can come and ask for that money to be allocated back to the school department. But in the end, it's the City Council's decision on what to do with the city's funds.
No, I understand that. I was just wondering if there's ever a time that the educational adequacy money was not spent for education?
I would say that we've never had an opportunity to debate that question.
Okay.
Because adequacy aid hasn't been increased in so many years, it's never been a question.
We did though, I think it was four or five years ago, there was, there was unanticipated adequacy and Superintendent Lane came to counsel and I think it was, it was under a million dollars. I think it was about $600,000 or something like that. And it was approved unanimously to be able to use that. It was unanticipated revenue, when unanticipated revenue comes in any form, above maybe, maybe $5,000, $10,000, $20,000 that we have to come to counsel, I believe, and ask for it. So it has been approved. I, I looked at the history of that before, so, so, you know, I don't know if there's one prior to that, but yeah, yep.
The next council meeting is October 9?
October 9th, correct.
Okay. But it will not be right at that meeting?
It's a first reading at that meeting, so it's just right into the record.
So there, but there is no conversation, there's no anything?
You are certainly welcome to comment during a public comment section. You can have whatever public comments you would like, but the council will not be debating it that evening.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
I think the only, the only exception, if they were to waive rules like we did, because this is money for this year, not next year, and we're already well into the year. So the next meeting is October 9th and then the 23rd, I, I believe, would be the second reading and discussion. So we wouldn't be able to use money starting from our August, you know, start date for the school until well into the school year, you know, two, well over, you know, two and a half months into it. So there is an opportunity to, to be able to waive rules for this as we did. It's just up to the council if they're, they'll do that. So we'll be able to spend our-
Well, Madam Chair, I'd like to correct that there is not an opportunity to waive rules because you have to have a public hearing. And the public hearing has to occur within a certain time period. It can't be that same night. So by RSA, we have to have the public hearing on it, so it's-
Dover had a public hearing in the same and they, they, they were able to, with one meeting, approve the supplemental appropriation that night.
Well, I will, I will tell you that will not happen this time.
A public hearing will not be?
Public hearing will not be on the 9th of October.
And what's the reference for that, Counselor?
I'm sorry?
What's the reference for why, why it can't happen?
Because that's, that's the way every money bill that comes to the council is handled.
Okay, so there's, is there an RSA or something in the charter that we can reference for that? Or maybe I'll ask for-
I can, I can send you that reference. I don't have it at my fingertips.
Okay, all right. Anyone else? Any other questions? All right, seeing none, moving on to our committee reports, our standing committees of Budget and Revenue, Board Member Marsh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. More budget talk. We had a, the Budget and Revenue Committee met on September 19th. We had an early budget goal setting session at the committee level. The committee reviewed and discussed a document entitled FY25, so we're looking forward. FY25 Budget Preparation Goals, prepared by Business Administrator Katie Kraus. The items associated with the goals, with the goal areas identified included, well, some of these included goals that were provided by committee members as well. Special, so goals for next year for the budget development, special education needs, counseling titles and different job duties, including school counselor, interventionalist, mental health counselor, social worker, potentially funding $329,000 in personnel when the ESAR grant, grants expire or grant expires regarding interventionalists, preschool. We had a discussion regarding goals for effective teacher-student ratios. And we were purposeful with the word effective versus adequate. And I think that's noteworthy. Also, effective use of peer educators to assist teachers, brainstorming potential non-traditional employee benefits, adequately, excuse me, adequately funding pros and cons. Quite sure what that one was. Technology audit, technology plan for infrastructure, hardware and software. So I'm pleased with the discussion that we had and our next meeting is scheduled for October 17th. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was wonderful. We had our first meeting with tons of admins from different schools and it was great to all be in the same room. One of the things that we, we talked about, the school-based health clinic and the fact that there is currently no school board member on the SBHC Committee. And we had talked about a couple of point, appointments, appointments of people possibly that could, could be a part of that. Another big focus was the communication with the community and among the schools, utilizing technology and other forms of communication. And right now, everyone's feeling good about their Facebook presence. And so there was a question about possibly in the future, streamlining Facebook and Instagram because they are interconnected. And so that's one thing that we may look at. We also wanted to look at how to get positive news from the school district and the press. And so we're kind of looking at all, all of that. Our next meeting is at 10:10, right here in City Hall, 545, in the Fish Bowl or the conference room right out there. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Sorry, Building, Grounds and Transportation, Board Member Hackworth.
No update. Trying to get a meeting next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, wonderful. All right. And finally, our Policy Committee, Board Member Tierney.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. The Policy Committee met just before our school board meeting here tonight. We finished up the discussion of, for Policy JRA, the Student Records and Access, Access to Student Records, FERPA policy. So we, the committee has agreed on the changes that we want to make to that policy and we should have that in a packet for the board to review at the next school board meeting. We then spent the remainder of the time tackling a new policy, ACN. This is a required, a priority policy that's new. We don't have one yet for the district. It's required by law and it's nursing mothers' accommodation status. So this one, if anybody's been sort of following the news and just other, I'm trying to find it now. Sorry, now, now I can't find it.
Oh, the Pump Act?
Yeah, well, it's called, this is called the Pump Act, but I was trying to think of the, that other one, the fairness, the pregnancy. Anyway, I, I can't find it now, I don't want to take the time. But this basically has to deal with accommodating nursing mothers and, you know, student or faculty. So we just were reading through the policy that was suggested by the, the NHSBA. Just kind of clarifying things that are, you know, to make it more relevant, specific to our district. And I, basically the committee, the Policy Committee will be looking at the changes next week, or sorry, the next meeting and, you know, agreeing to those and bringing them forward. So our next policy meeting is October 11th at 545 in the SAU office.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, now's the time for our presentation. Do you need the, okay, wonderful.
I just wanted to introduce Cody Donahue. He's the coordinator for the Summersworth Youth Connection and I asked him if he could present and he's graciously said he would and I know he's brought some folks with him, so we're looking forward to your presentation. Thank you for doing this tonight, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for having me. While I fumble around with this, just want to say, loving to see the Hilltopper Blue representation tonight. Looks like you guys came out strong to support our Homecoming Game winners, Go Toppers. I saw a lot of you there, so that was very nice to see you there too and to see you kind of represent tonight. Just want to get this set up where I can see my speaker notes, but I'm having a hard time, as you can see. There we go. So thank you for the introduction. So SYC is Summersworth Youth Connection, we're the K-8 Before and After School and Summer Enrichment Program here. It's a program of the Summersworth School District. I know you all know that, but just saying it for some folks at home. My name is Cody Donahue again, I'm the director. So just a quick look at what I wanted to go over tonight. We're just going to quickly look at the program mission and goals, hear from some of our students, a quick look at some numbers such as attendance and revenue, some feedback survey results, a look at summer and some of the stuff that we have going on. Realistically, I'm probably going to talk about some of our current happenings through photos here that we have added of our beautiful children. So first, our mission, this has been our longstanding mission. We're in our 17th year of the program. This is our second year not being grant funded, but we were grant funded for 15 years. And this mission has, I don't know if it's been since year one, but it's been certainly beyond the past two years. So it's to provide opportunities for youth, grades K through 8, to participate in safe caring, enriching and supportive after-school environment. I guess we have since added Before School as well, which fosters the positive development of academic and social skills for the youth of Summersworth through family, school and community partnerships. Some of our objectives, goals and objectives include supporting academic success and achievement. We do that through things like having homework lab or what used to be called ELS Zone. When, we try to have our enrichments kind of echo what students are learning in school as much as we can. So if they're learning a particular skill in science, we try to include that in some of our after-school enrichments. We promote skills in math, literacy, arts, health and wellness and character development such as decision-making. We support social skills and character development through things like community service. We provide a safe and supportive enriching program before and after school. And again, provide or promote strong parent and family involvement, not only in SYC, but in the school and district as well. Oh yeah, I said I would talk about some of the photos, didn't I? Is that our mascot? So this is, these are, this is a photo of, one of our enrichments last year was like a community service oriented enrichment and we made, it was called Beds for Paws and middle and elementary school students made some beds for dogs and cats at, I think it's called the Pope, Pope Humane Society, which used formerly called the Cochicco Valley Humane Society. And here is a grumpy cat theoretically enjoying one of the beds that were made. We were able to take a field trip there and get a tour and unfortunately, all the cats were grumpy cats and they were like, there, you can look at them, but stay far away. But there were a lot of cute dogs there as well that kids got to see. So I would like to hear from our students kind of first. I've got some more data and whatnot to share, but we've got a couple of students here. They're both busy students coming straight from their extracurriculars. One's coming right from dance and one's coming right from football. So Isabel Boucher, if you could come up? You good with that?
Hello, it's nice to meet some of you. My name is Isabella Boucher and I'm an eighth grader at SMS. Today I'm here to discuss with you the importance of SYC. I've been going to SYC for years, ever since I was in first grade, my mom signed me up and I absolutely love the program. I've also loved the way the atmosphere was. I love the staff and I loved how they just do more than, they do more than just serve us food and like keep down the crazy, if you will. But they, sorry, they true, I'm really truly thankful for them because they also organize like so many different fun field trips for us and they really help us with their homework and we can build strong relationships with them. While on the topic of field trips, I would like to note that these are planned and never once have I like looked at the clock and been like, okay, can like, can we hurry up? Like, can I go home now? Like, I have things to do. I've actually always looked at the clock and been like, can this be longer, please? Like, I don't want to go home. And in fact, like, I love the places we've been to. So we've been to Dover Bowl, unfortunately I was at, I was in New Jersey for this, so I couldn't go. But my friends, they went to this place called In Flight, which was like a huge ropes course in Kittery and, and I saw photos and I was kind of jealous. I couldn't go. There was, we also went to the Works Indoor Swimming Pool, so we got to like swim. It was really fun. And we also got to see the play Peter Pan in Manchester at the Palace Theater and that was really like cool to see, show the lights, like the different costumes. It's really entertaining. And now, like, our summer program is very helpful. It helps fifth graders to be able to connect with middle schoolers. So when I was in my summer, like going in between to middle school, it was so scary. I remember like seeing the hallways be like in different places each time, it's kind of like the stairwell in Harry Potter for me a little bit. But I also liked it as going into my eighth grade year because with me having such a busy summer, I do, let me tell you, I do not remember a single thing of square roots or how to like properly write essays, so that gave me a nice fresh reminder. And it's so much fun just doing activities, like majority of these activities except for the computer and the pumpkins, we all did over the summer. So we got to do like just a bunch of things. And I also love the enrichment. So last year we got to cook, there was like a paint furniture place. So we got to, so I saw some kids, they used actual power tools and they like screwed different pieces on, they like sanded it down and they stained it, it was really cool. And they even taught us how to wood burn in like the art room. So some, I think my friend, she made like this bee or something like that. I could be totally wrong, but I swear I remember it. So I swear, if you guys go to one of these places, like one of these enrichments, you will want to keep coming back because it's so much fun to do. I also love ELS Zone. So like I said before, I'm a dancer, I'm super busy, I have like 10 dance classes, competition, like it's hectic. So when Ms. Hanlon goes, hey, you have like five different pieces of homework, good luck with that, I'm like, thank you so much. So I get, so I get to be able to get help from high schoolers and to build also a relationship with them. So I get to be like, okay, how do I do this math problem? And they will help me. And I actually still have some relationships with them to this day. Obviously they were eighth graders at the time, but they also helped me. So some are, some are sophomores and seniors. SYC is a great place to learn and incredible place to make friends. So when I leave today, please remember how amazing the staff are, how amazing the- So when I leave today, please remember how amazing the staff are, how amazing the atmosphere is and the amazing like field trips and everything we go on. Thank you.
I know, I know she technically is a plant in the audience, but I did not coach her at all. I, I said, hey Izzy, just this was last week, like I have a presentation, would you like to, to come? And I know you've been a longtime student of SYC. She's like, yeah, I'll write, yeah, I'll write a speech. I was like, do you want to like meet after school? Do you want to talk about it? She's, no, 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 I'm, I'll just do it, I'll just do it, like I write a speech. Okay, checked in with her today and she whipped it out and was like, here, here, how's this? I was like, that's perfect. She did a great recap of so much of what we do and I don't think I could do a better job. So next up, we have Calvin Day, another eighth grade student of ours, to talk about chess club.
Hi, I'm Calvin Day. Last year I was playing a game, this is just the story of how I started chess club. Last year I was playing a game of chess with one of my friends. And he beat me and said, that was fun, let's play again. And I said, sure, why not? And then the teacher interrupted and said, uh, pack up, time to go to lunch. And so when I was packing up and eating lunch, I was just thinking to myself, why can't we play after school? Like have a chess club? And waking up the next day, I said to myself, hey, we can, and I'm going to start one here. So when I got to school, I went to my two closest friends who played chess with me and asked, hey, I'm, I am going to start a chess club here, do you want to join? Then one of them asked, wait, we have chess club? I answered, no, not yet, but we will. And then after school, I went up to Mr. Donahue and said, I would really like to start a chess club. Do you think you could help? And he said, sure, let's, let's do this, let's just go for it. And then he said, okay, we need a room. And I said, okay, let's go, I'm going to go ask Ms. Patton. I was in go mode then saying, let's go. Ms. Patton said, sure, just make sure you leave the room as good as you found it. And after saying, of course, she said, yes. We started having chess clubs in that room, which was fun. They were every Wednesday after school from after school to four. And the first chess club we had was, had about 20 kids there, which I was really happy to see that. I was not expecting that many kids to be there. And then another kid would go up to me and say, hey, do you think we could have music? And I said, sure, just give me like a song. And then we used the speaker and anything they said, I just made it, put it in the speaker and then it was good. And then during this, we had a tournament at the end of the year, which is the middle photo. We had a tournament and that was at, that was through high school too. So many high schoolers who wanted to come and play could do that too. And then Mr. Donahue had a couple of gift cards there and medals and that was really fun. And chess club right after school. So you know, there's a time period, so you can go and catch the late bus. It's free and you don't even have to be in SYC, which you know, and the free thought, I just thought was really good. And you know, I am another busy student, so if I'm not there, I just still want to make sure it's set up and people can play. And I'm still really just happy that, you know, to think a couple of months ago, I was just saying, hey, this is an idea and now it's a thing. Now it's chess club and we're playing chess and it's really fun after school. Thank you for talking.
So yeah, chess club was one of our like most successful things we did last year. And it really came from a student leader such as Calvin of having an idea, wanting to start it, recruiting friends and just like getting into it. And we just, we love like when we're able to do that with SYC, taking especially like, you know, middle, middle school student leaders and saying like, hey, like what do you want to inspire other kids to do or get into? Kids came with no skills, kids came who were really good, they were, they matched with each other, taught each other. Calvin had a daily puzzle every day. And like he said, we had a chess tournament and we invited local middle school and high schools as well as our own. And we didn't have a huge turnout from outside the city, but we did have a few kids that came from, someone came from Marshwood, someone came from like Oyster River, someone from Dover. And that was, and we had a couple of fifth graders from Maplewood and that was, it was just, it was really cool. So we're looking to do that again at some point this year. So at this time, if you folks need dinner, you are welcome to leave because I, maybe I should have saved the, the students for the end to keep you, everybody so engaged. But did, before they do leave, did, I saw a hand raised, did you want to ask?
I, I just want to give them a shout out, like great job presenting, that's super hard. I'm proud of both of you, great job, sorry.
Yeah, that was great, you guys, I just, and the, the leadership that you guys both are showing and just the poise, it's awesome. And I love, I love the idea that so many kids are into chess. I mean, that's just so cool. I, I mean, I love, dance is awesome too, I'm glad there's lots of kids in dance. Don't want to diminish that, but just, I mean, that's something that you wouldn't necessarily think, like middle school kids would be like, yeah, let's sit down and play chess. So that is, yeah, that's awesome, good job.
I also want to thank the students, Isabel and Calvin. The, I appreciate that, the conversational style of your words. I think it really, your excitement and appreciation really shined through. And as far as chess, I, I love playing chess myself. And I think it teaches us to be both present and look around the corner at the same time. So keep that chess up and it's, it's similar to life, thank you.
All right, I just have to say really quick, Calvin and Izzy, I'm so proud of you both and I can't believe how grown up you both are. And yeah, good job.
So if we can continue, you're welcome to stay, or you can come sit up here, I'll give you my seat. Come on, come on up. But typically, we have other things going on and I know, so you are welcome to stay or leave. We won't, we won't, either way, it's fine. Yeah, no judge, right, Mr. Donahue, is all right? Okay, 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 all right, okay, we'll continue.
All right, I'm sorry, I, I think Lou and I talked about five to 10 minutes and I think we're probably at 10 minutes. So I'm going to try to go quick. So just want to share our, like where we're at with like enrollment and average attendance right now. At the middle school, we have about 20 kids coming every day, 46 at elementary school after school, 12 at Maplewood in the mornings and 25 at Idlehurst in the mornings. And they're, they're relatively close to the numbers last year. But those are, at the middle school in particular, we kind of like generally see more kids coming in like the later fall and winter. And then it kind of trickles down again in the spring when weather gets nice and stuff. Yeah, question?
Do you find that the absence of a late bus has impacted the middle school attendance this year?
So I, I think so as far as like Homework Lab, because what we've, we've kind of put out there is that we have Homework Lab, if a kid was going to come to do homework, we, we're not going to charge them. If, you know, like if they're there and they're, they're there because they want to do an assignment and they're not enrolled in SYC, we would let them stay. And there's been a few kids that are like, well, I can't, I don't have a ride home afterward. I know that the, you know, like there weren't a ton of kids on the late bus every day, but I think throughout the week, there was a fair number that did use it. I mean, even Calvin mentioned it with the, the chess club, that was something a lot of those kids took. So just throughout the year, we, we served about 261 kids last year. That included like some of our special events, like we didn't include like the school dance or the big family engagement. But we had a couple of drop-in days over our February and April break. And our summer program, that came out to 261 like unique kids. And right now, we're at 143 between everyone who signed up for before care after school and who participated in our summer program. So we have the SYC, you know, budget. These are a couple of additional things that we had last year. So we, we raised about $600 in donations. Some of that kind of was just came to us. Actually, it all kind of just came to us when, there were a few families that were just like, hey, can I contribute? We had a couple fundraisers that raised $823 and we had a lot of volunteers throughout the year. And when you use the like online metric for what that value's out to be, it was almost $10,000. So that's just like some additional contribution to the program. So the income target for last year, which is the, like a lot of times Katie referred to it as our revenue goal. If you take out what the city's contribution is, that's $140,000 and we kind of hit that like really close. So I know there was a point like in budget season that it looked a little scary, like we were kind of like behind the mark. We ended up landing on the mark there. We ended up having a savings last year. I did review these numbers with Katie and everything. It's, you know, a little funny not having her here to be like, right Katie? But, but I did review this with her. So we, we had some savings last year, it, it worked out to about $16,000. That was primarily in like the staffing of benefits items, like retirement and FICA. I did hold back on a couple line items. As I said, during budget season, you know, it was like, are we going to hit that target? And I wanted to make sure that we had a balanced budget at the end. But again, there were some like delinquent parent accounts and stuff at that time and a lot of people kind of caught up toward the end of the year. So we ended up with that surplus. So just to kind of have the visual representation of like what our, our budget looks like. So that blue is the income from like parent fees. Those donations also went into that. The yellow is that $50,000 that the city contributes. And then the green is, is the rest of that from the school. We did a couple of surveys toward the end of the year last year. We asked parents and certain student, or parents and staff if they feel that SYC provides adequate time and support for students in their academics. And 84% of teachers said yes and 100% of parents said, said yes. Of course, you guys know, you don't get 100% participation when you put out surveys. So if we did, who knows, those numbers might look a little bit different. But some, some teachers that didn't say yes and they said like NA or other, they had some recommendations like, you know, and it, they said, when you utilize like the SHS, Summersworth Honor Society, NHS National Honor Society, high school students to provide that one-on-one. There was some like additional engagement there. I mean, you heard it tonight, Izzy even mentioned it. So they had some recommendations. And one of them was also to have like a dedicated person who would touch base with teachers on student needs. And so we've tried to implement that this year. We have our seventh grade science teachers like the go-to Homework Lab coordinator. 100% of parents agreed, SYC provides a high-quality program. SYC provides nurturing and caring environment, that we offer a variety of appropriate enrichments and clubs. And close to 100%, so 97 said they feel SYC benefits their child socially, emotionally, and academically. And we just also asked how, you know, are SYC programs priced fairly and appropriately? And 90%, 97 agreed and one person actually said the middle school is low. So that was a little surprising. We asked staff, is SYC a valuable program? Should it continue to receive district and community support? From a one to five, so five would be strongly agree and the average was 4.73. And that, what that looked like was 83% of staff saying that they strongly agree. We also asked staff, what do, what does SYC do best? And these are the top five things. It said creates positive connections between students, keeps students safe, offers engaging enrichments, helps students grow socially, emotionally, and furthers the district, or the mission of the district and the school. And here are some photos, our kids visiting TurboCam, a local manufacturing company. They learned about what, not only what they make, but like the variety of career paths that are within a company such as theirs, like, you know, it's machinists, it's engineers, it's people who do catering because they're, you know, they have thousands of employees, they have people in the office. So they, they got to learn about like what a, you know, relatively medium, like small, medium-sized company in the local area looks like and some educational pathways to get there. Quick look at summer, it was very similar to the prior year. I know last year Nancy, Chris Tebow and I presented. We had, so full day, our students that stayed for SYC, we had about 30. That was a little bit lower from the prior year. We actually capped it at 30 this year, just for like budgetary reasons. We just, without the, the prior years like COVID and SARS funds, the budget just looked different for summer this year. So we met, met that cap. So what a typical schedule would look like, they'd get there about 8:30, they had breakfast, they'd do their morning academic rotations. And then students who weren't staying for SYC would leave. We would have lunch, we would do some sort of like team building activities and then a couple hours of enrichments. So they were, in the morning, they all again participated in academics. They were in small groups based on reading and math. And again, small groups, so they could have like focused and deliberate lessons based on like their, their skills. Again, Izzy mentioned square roots and stuff, she's like, great refresher. I think a lot of kids experience stuff like that. And then in the enrichments, we did things like cooking, physical activities. We had scavenger hunts and again, team builders, art, science, some of our field trips. Izzy mentioned going to high ropes course. The littles went to the Dover Children's Museum. And we did a handful of state parks as well. And that's a picture on the bottom right of White Lake. And that's, I think that, yeah, that's Mount Shakora there. It's a great, great lake, the kids love it there. Another student survey, these were all mostly increased from last year, which I love to see. Students, 88% agreed they made friends at Summer SYC, 91 said they tried new things. 94% said they learned new things, 91% said they felt more comfortable going into the school year. Another thing that Izzy mentioned, 97% made new connections with staff, 100% had fun, which was great. 97% said that last year. And 94% enjoyed the field trips. And that's it, that's what I got for you folks. Other than the save the date for Lights On For Learning, which is a Family Engagement Committee event. It's on October 19th, so less than a month away. At 6 o'clock at Idlehurst, it's open to all families in the district. There's going to be a dinner, free books for students, some game prizes for students and a parent presentation that has, aligns with SYC goals of building character and self-development in your kids. All right?
Thank you, I'll just open it up to questions. Yeah, Board Member Clark, Tierney, and then Wentworth.
Thank you for all that information. I have a quick, a couple of quick questions. First one was, I saw something about community service, but I didn't see what that was, did I miss that part?
Yeah, so, well, the Beds for Paws was one of the things that we did. That we like to ask the kids what they want to do. And that was a huge one last year and we did that for a few months. Another one was the cleanup day that we held in May and students helped to organize that. And they helped, they went out in the community and cleaned up a lot of trash. We went, we took a field trip to Will and Pond and did that. They helped create some of the art, like centerpieces and they did placemats for some of the senior events that the Recreation Department held last year. They created some art that was hung downtown for the parade last year as well. And they, they did gardening around the school grounds and stuff like that.
Nice, nice. I also had a question about like the price for SYC, do we have that for the families?
Yeah, so it ranges. So if you are a middle school student and you qualify for free and reduced lunch, that is the lowest price. It's only $40 a month. We try to make that super accessible. The middle school was free for at least about seven years or so. Because they found that it was just a barrier to, to students asking like, hey, can I, I want to do this club, but can you pay for it to their parents? If you don't qualify for free and reduced lunch, it's double that. At the middle school, it's $80 a month. So that's still only about $20 a week, it's still pretty accessible. For families who are just after school and they, I could pull up the, the whole thing, but there's, there's different rates. But it, it's about 150, I believe, for after-school at elementary. And it's, it's, if you were doing before and after school and you didn't qualify for free and reduced lunch, that's like the, the highest, that's 360 a month. So it really depends if you're, even if you're a Maplewood student doing before care, it's a little bit less expensive because it's a shorter program, they start earlier. So it depends, you know, elementary or middle and if you're doing before or after school. Yeah, but that is, it's on our website too. So if you go to Yeah, but that is, it's on our website too. So if you go to just the S A U website, there's a tab for families and then a tab for S Y C. And the, the fees are all on the website.
Okay, Board Member Tierney.
Yes, thank you. So Cody, first I just want to say I love that, just the idea, the fact that Calvin could come up and say like, hey, I have this idea. And that you allowed him to run with it and supported him. I just think that's great to empower the students like that. It's, and I, it's very Maria Montessori of you, right? It's like, what are the kids interested in? You know, it's, it's great. So, but I did have a couple of questions about the data. So the seventeen percent of the school staff who didn't, I guess, or, so you had eighty, eighty-eight percent of the staff, eighty-seven? Eighty-three, sorry. Look at my, I wrote it down wrong. Eighty-three percent of the staff said this is a great program. It's meeting all these needs or this criteria. I'm curious about the ones who didn't.
Not sure.
It's the one.
I'm sorry, is this the blind? Anybody?
That one. Yeah, the eighty-four percent. Sorry, I wrote down eighty-three.
Yeah, agree that we provide adequate time. So yeah, so eight percent said unsure.
Sorry, Cody, not this one. The one that was of all the categories.
This one?
He, was it that one? Back one, back one.
Oh, this one?
Yes, strongly agree that, and you, and you listed a bunch of different things. So I was just curious, what kind of feedback have you received? What sort of credit, you know, constructive criticism have you received?
That wasn't, that, that wasn't eighty-three just saying yes. That was eighty-seven saying strongly agree. So the four point seven three was an average and what, um, yeah, I didn't, it was an anonymous survey. So what, there were a couple of people that did rate kind of low.
Yeah.
Like a two.
Okay.
And like that is disappointing to see, but there, but I don't know who those people are and they didn't.
They didn't elaborate. Oh, okay, okay. That's the worst, right?
Comments on that.
No comment. Yeah, because so nothing, nothing to say, oh.
Yeah, and I mean, I think the way that the question is worded could also just come into question. It says, you know, that should continue to receive district and community support. And I think there are, this was, this was shortly after budget season and I know you remember.
Yep.
We had to make cuts and there was a lot of question about this or that.
Yep.
And I think, sometimes I think that when the question of this or that, S Y C is one of those questions, right?
Sure.
So I, my personal opinion is that those people might think, no, we don't necessarily shouldn't like, parents should pay for it. Parents should pay for it fully. You know, that would be my interpretation, but.
Okay. Okay.
I'm not going off of any hard data.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just didn't know if that was, if, if there was any, anything more in particular or just, you know, anything more explanatory like, oh, well, we think maybe it didn't really meet students' needs for X, Y, Z or something like that.
Yeah.
Okay. The other thing, if I remember correctly from last summer, where you, you, so the students, so the thirty who ended up attending, were, wasn't it the, the students with special needs were prioritized? Is that, I'm trying to remember what Nancy, or is this, am I confusing? It was something?
That was for special, like that was summer school. There was a separate program from S Y C.
Yeah, so most, most students were, were fully integrated and S Y C students and special ed students participating in a lot of the same classes. But they were separate, they were grouped based on their, their reading and math levels. There was a small, like they called it the life skills group that was more pulled out from the rest of the groups. And there was also like E S L and some other services that were provided too.
So, so have you guys been tracking metrics? Do you track metrics in term, and what I'm just, what I'm wondering is, do you see that the enrichment and not, even if it's not necessarily an academic enrichment, right? But just students are just, they're getting more skilled. They're growing, you know, they're, they're learning new skills and they're developing, you know, different strengths and everything. And so I just wonder if that's, if you're seeing that translated into some of student performance. So if you like, look at the cohort of kids who are in S Y C, you know.
Yeah, I mean, every year that we've looked at the, like the students in S Y C, they've consistently grown in their N I W A scores and stuff like that. But where it becomes difficult is you're, you're having students from all different levels in, in S Y C. And it, it, some of them come infrequently and it gets really challenged, murky to kind of pull out like a yes or a no from some of that data. But I'm certainly interested in looking at the, the current year's data, looking at it, the students who participated in summer. And somebody recently made like a recommendation of like, you could pull, you know, if you're saying you've got seventy-three percent of students that are in the red zone in S Y C over the summer, you could pull a co, a random cohort that you've got the same percentage of students in the red zone and seeing if they both grow consistently. So we're gonna, we, we are going to take a look at that. And I know, I know with special ed, they, they look at.
Oh, yeah.
Student growth from before and after very closely, if that's what one of your questions was to.
I was also thinking about those ninety-plus students who speak all those different languages, you know, and wonder, I don't know how many of them participate in S Y C, but what an opportunity if they need more English language instruction, just a real casual informal basis, you know, to help those kids.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, Board Member Wentworth. And that's it, okay.
Hello. I was, one of the things I was wondering was about, and there are lots of survey, different surveys. I think there were lots of different surveys. I didn't know if you had a ballpark of like-ish surveys returned. Where they're like, you know, a hundred, where they're five, where.
Oh, oh, from, oh, well, well, parents were about an eighty percent return rate. And staff was about thirty percent. So that was definitely lower than I would like to see. But I don't, I don't remember the number. I think it was somewhere around forty or.
Um, and then I also wanted to make a comment that I really enjoyed from one of your surveys that someone gave you specific feedback about utilizing something else and that you then took that into action. So that's a perfect example of taking feedback and growing from it and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Wonderful. All right, Board Member Marsh, and I think that's it.
Thank you. Thank you for you and your team's efforts and for the information tonight. Really, I think the program provides opportunities for students, for kids to focus in and to also broaden their horizons and broaden their life experiences and skills. My question is, can you talk a little bit about how you manage program payments? Are they collected on-site? Are they through the mail or electronic? How do you manage the, the payment, including reminders of payments? Because my mind goes to sustainability and, and wanting to make sure that happens.
Yeah. No, I'm glad you brought that up because it, it was a challenging year last year because actually our, so we hit, we raised a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars from program fees. But the prior year, the number that I got from Katie and what I'm not sure about if it included before care or not was forty-five. So even if that did include before care and say it was ninety even, that was a big jump of an increase. Because program fees did go up, but not only did program fees go up, again, it was free at the middle school, but it was forty dollars a month at, no, sorry, forty dollars a week, which is a hundred and sixty dollars a month at the elementary school after-school. And that went up, that's what the price is for free and reduced now. So families that don't qualify for free and reduced lunch did pay more at the elementary school as well. It went from forty dollars a week to sixty-five dollars a week last year. So how fees are collected is they're charged on a monthly basis. They get an invoice sent out from the S A U. And then parents can pay in cash or check and they can send that into, they get it, they get their invoice in the mail. They can mail it back to the S A U or they can drop off a check at one of our programs. And we midway year, midway through the year last year, we started accepting cash at the schools like one day a week so that we would just have it one night overnight and deposit it with the S A U the following day. And that, that's when we actually started to see an increase in payments come in. Because a lot of families, they're, they were like, I don't have checks. I never remember. Just, you know, I remember, never remember to like go get a money order. A lot, some people were paying for money orders. This year we've also changed that system, hearing feedback from families all last year of saying, why don't you have an online payment option? Why don't you accept credit cards? And we're working on becoming part of the twenty-first century here. As you know, it can be a challenge sometimes. But so hopefully starting October first, everything's supposed to be set up and it's going to be a parent portal through people's power school. It's going to be linked to a student power school account and there's an option to pay with a credit card online.
Board, go ahead. Board Member Dimmers.
Some families do come part-time. We haven't offered a part-time rate, which is something that parents, parents have, have asked for. So that's something that I think again, we're going to take another look at this year going into next year. Especially with, with the, the change in the payment system, that was an additional, like really big complication to kind of track going into this year. So we said, we're going to look at this again in another year. And part of the reasoning is especially at the middle school, there are a lot of students that come part-time. But we feel like the, the rate is low and accessible. So if you're paying ten dollars a week and you're coming two days a week.
Well, I was thinking more like.
Elementary.
Before care, after care type stuff.
Yeah.
I, I know a lot of people don't need it five days, but maybe would supplement some of the revenue for you.
There have been some exceptions that we were able to make last year for, or in this year actually, for families that are truly utilizing it very part-time. Like if they were coming one day a week or they're coming two days every other week because they have a specific like family arrangement or something. And we would maybe not charge them for after-school. We would charge them like the, the before-school rate just to kind of make a compromise there. And we try to make those compromises like with families when we can, because we don't want to turn anyone away. But we also, you know, have a budget to balance at the end of the day. So it can be a challenge.
Thank you so much, Mr. Donahue.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Sorry to take more than ten minutes, but I'm, I'm very happy to be able to give you guys such a thorough update. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving right along to our policy adoptions. There are no policies for first reading, but we, on agenda item six point two, we have a policy for second reading and that's policy E F A A. Student food service meal payment charging and meal account management. Do I have a motion to read by title only?
Motion to read by title only.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. All right, Board Member Tierney, can you read the title please? Thank you.
Policy E F A A, student food service meal payment charging and meal account management.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept this policy as written?
Motion to accept the policy as written.
Second.
Any discussion about this policy? All in favor of adopting this policy? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? No? Okay. E F A A is adopted. Let's move to our new business, seven point one, New Hampshire School Boards Association Proposed Resolutions twenty twenty-three. This was in your packet. I think we have an update from Board Member Wentworth and Tierney, so I'll hand it over.
Yes, I am, um, yes, there are numerous proposed resolutions. Some that are supported by New Hampshire School Board Association and some that are not. A lot of it is specific wording, which happens to fall really perfectly into policy. The delegate assembly this year will be held on Saturday, October fourteenth. And Ms. Tierney will be attending in my place. And then whoever else is interested, I can certainly go through them all. But as I said, they were in your packets and everyone has the kind of information. If there are any specific questions or.
Yeah, typically we kind of support, either support the New Hampshire School Boards Association recommendations and language. But again, like once you get there, they kind of delve into it deeper. If there are specifics, it, again, it would be great to email, uh, Board Member Tierney to, with your, with your ideas. But if there's anything right now publicly about, about this, we'd be happy to kind of put it out there for discussion. I don't believe there is.
I, I just wanted to clarify, yeah, because I did notice that they do want formal recommendations from the board for each of those proposals. Yeah, proposals. So yeah, so if you could just clarify, so during the delegate assemblies, when we just hear the, there's discussion about these led by the N H S B A and then at some later date, we put a formal.
I actually, it all happens in, in lifetime. And a lot of it is, you'll see and, and many of those resolutions are asked for more specific. Is that they're asking, they're like, well, we might support this, but we're not a hundred percent. We need it to be clarified more. And so during the assembly is where it will be clarified a little bit more. My recommendation would currently at this juncture be, because I've, I read through them and I felt comfortable with what the N H S B A had recommended and/or questions. And so very similar to last year, I kind of took that. And I think I probably went rogue on one or two things that we had talked about before. There, there was a little more, if I could say it, there was a little more meat last year. Whereas this year feels a little more technical.
So for the whole board right now, typically what happens is that we kind of usually, and historically we've supported the N H S B A's recommendations and their language, but as the delegate, you're, you're representing the board and, and with that. So if there are specifics from the board, otherwise right now, we kind of can accept the resolutions as the New Hampshire School Board Associations have, have what they support wholly.
You just, I was going to say, I was trying to pull it up again because now I have so many.
And we'll have another school board meeting before this too.
So we'll have another school board meeting before.
Before the delegate assembly.
Okay, great. Yeah, because I feel like I, I want to delve a little bit more closely into them and, and I, because I, I don't, yeah.
Yep.
Sorry. So what if there is, you know, in, in our discussion, yeah, I don't know, half the board kind of agrees with, you know, supports the N H S B A's position and then the other half is like, yeah, I'm not so sure about that. I, what, yeah.
You're the delegate. I mean, you're going to have to make that call, I would think. I, I didn't mean to cut you off. I apologize.
Okay, okay.
That's what your role is and, and that you make that decision based on the information you have and just do the best you can.
Okay. And so we do vote at that time. Okay.
But if there's anything from the board now to communicate right now or another, you'll have other opportunities, another board meeting. We just brought this early to the table to be able to discuss.
Okay, so this will be on the agenda then for the next school board meeting for us to discuss.
Can be. And if there's any updates, we'll be happy to put it under, we'll put it under old business with updates if there's resolutions. We can't offer one, a new one. It, that's.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
But just with our temperature of the board.
Yeah, no, I just, I, I, it would, I would appreciate if I basically leave the next board meeting knowing how, you know, getting the temperature of, of everybody on each of the resolutions. So, okay, okay.
Okay, all right, moving on. We have no old or unfinished business. Our future meeting dates, our next school board meeting is October tenth. And we have many policy committing, committee meetings every couple of weeks. And the twenty-fourth we have, is our second October meeting date. Any comments by visitors this evening? I do not believe there are any, okay? Comments by board members? Just raise your hand if you have anything and I will call on you if you have any comments this evening. We do have a quick non-public after this, but. All right. Going once, going twice, seeing none. Okay, moving on to, um, you know, we, we do, we're going to take a break actually to, before our non-public, a recess. So I will entertain a motion to go into non-public per ninety-one A three-two A.
Motion to go into non-public. First went to RSA ninety-one A three-two A.
Second it.
Okay. And a quick roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
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 Yes.